At 7:00 this evening, I will open tonight's meeting of the Lunenburg Select Board of Tuesday, February 15, 2022, and ask everyone to please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your Republic where it stands, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everyone here, everyone on Zoom and everybody at home watching.
Good evening.
In accordance with the requirements of the open meeting law, please be advised that this meeting is being recorded and broadcast live over the Lunenburg Public Access Channel, on Facebook Live, on the Public Access Facebook page, and will be uploaded to the Lunenburg Access YouTube channel within 24 hours after the conclusion of the meeting. If you have a computer, smartphone, or tablet, and would like to participate in tonight's meeting remotely, you can do so via the Zoom app. Tonight's webinar ID on Zoom is 909-174-0347. If you don't have access to one of those devices, and have access to a telephone, and still would like to join and participate in tonight's meeting, you can do so by dialing toll-free 888-475-4499. And again, the webinar ID is 909-174-0347. The posted agenda lists all the topics which may be discussed at tonight's meeting, and are those reasonably anticipated by the Chair. Votes may be taken as a result of these discussions. Not all items listed may in fact be discussed, and other items not listed may also be brought up for discussion to the extent permitted by the open meeting law. Okay, all the protocol out of the way. I will ask if there's any public comment from the Board this evening.
None.
I have none.
No, Mr. Jeffries, okay. Any public comment from the public? And? Seeing none, okay. So, right into any announcements.
Just the town caucus is March 14 at 6:30 PM at the middle school, high school auditorium. And warrant articles for the annual town meeting are due by March 21 by 4:00 PM that day in the Select Board's office.
Thank you. Okay, so we will jump right to our workshop. We have a meeting with our landscape architect, Ray Dunnett, on the preferred concept for the landscape design for 30 School Street. So let's start with that, and then we can get on to the other two bullets of that workshop.
Okay.
So I'll turn it over to you, Mr. Dunnett.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Yes. Great. Let me pull up.
You have some really good Blair Witch Project lighting going on for you.
I know, I know, this terrible lighting here. Let me just go to full screen here. Okay, is there a big puppy on the screen?
There is.
Does that come with the project?
Okay. So this is our third community meeting. And I'll talk about where we are in the process, quickly review our first two community meetings and our surveys, then I'll present to you our final master plan, and we'll have a discussion about costs and phasing opportunities for the project. So, as you can see, we started off with the process in December with the site walk, with the Select Board and town officials to get input on what might happen at this park. We did a first community meeting in early December as well to generate comments and followed that up with an online survey. Based on the feedback that we received, we developed a couple of options for the park, presented them in mid-January, and issued another survey about how folks felt about each one of those options, and we can go over some of those comments tonight. And then, you know, between then and now, we refined the master plan to hopefully capture everybody's input. And we're looking to finish everything up after tonight, by the end of the month. So in Community Meeting 1, we talked a lot about the history and some inspiration, what this park could be. We also talked about the condition of the old primary school, and generated a lot of feedback from that via the first online survey. Surprising how it matched so well with the request for proposals for this project. Folks really wanted town green, community space for the farmer's market, concerts, and enjoy nature with some pollinator gardens, and have an opportunity to picnic, and have enough parking to accommodate all of these new uses. So, as I mentioned before, we developed two alternatives, Option A and Option B. The two options were somewhat similar. The biggest differentiator was in sort of the bowl in the back, this one had sort of a concert venue, the other one had a nature play area. These are sort of the surveys that were distributed. We had a pretty good response in both surveys. We almost had 40 respondents and a lot of really great comments. At the end of the day, and this sort of follows our discussion with the Select Board, that Option A was the preferred scheme by a pretty big margin, actually. We had six folks who preferred Option B. Some people commented that, you know, they would like to see a little bit of each in the final. So we tried to accommodate this in the final design as best as we could. Keeping all throughout the process, we identified the design elements to be included. Those never changed, and this is sort of the overall plan that we've come up with. The plan features major improvements at the school site, where we take down the building but replace it with something that's historically, gives the building historic recognition by designing it an at-grade outline where the building footprint was, with the four corners having an 18-inch-high or two-foot-high seat wall, which gives you a little bit of sense that you're in the building. A large 40-by-70-foot shade structure will provide opportunities for recreational programming and even the farmer's market. And then, one big design element that was requested was a strolling path. We've created a handicap parking area at sort of the entrance to the park with an accessible path that goes all the way around. Picnic tables close to the parking area and away from Pollinator Meadow that we wanted to incorporate into the plan for some nature interpretation and learning. A large lawn area that can be used for a variety of programming and purposes, or just laying down. And then, you know, a very heavily favored concept was to have this back area, this bowl, be sort of an amphitheater with the new band shell that would match the pavilion, and granite seating that is nestled into the hillside with some shade trees on either side of it. We would buffer the southern property to this residential to buffer from sound and from the park itself. A big need was for a public restroom facility. We've shown two of those here. These are the Portland Lou's that we've spoken about in previous meetings. These would require utility connections, water service, electrical for lighting, and sewer. And then, also at the forefront of the building would be a nice sort of ornamental gate that would allow, you know, farmers' trucks to drop off their wares or any emergency vehicles that need to get into the park. We would have an interpretive sign that talks about the old primary school. And then, the other big move here is to reorganize the parking area. Initially, we had 25 spaces, and we've increased the parking to 48 spaces, almost double what we have. Some of them are here, but we've also developed 12 new spaces back behind the Ritter Building. We were very cognizant of safely having pedestrians walk to the park from Mass Ave. We've created accessible walkways and crosswalks so that we can safely separate pedestrians from vehicles. We've also added a bike rack. Part of the big move, as well as this is a very wide, currently a very wide opening at Mass Ave, we've narrowed that down to a 24-foot lane. This would be two-way traffic in here, and then one way around the cul-de-sac, if you will. Here's a little bit of a more detailed shot of the actual park itself. We anticipated in our design to have lighting, pole lighting, which would be at like a pedestrian level. It would be dark sky compliant, not interfere with any of the neighbors' view lines, but just to create a sense of safety in the park. We also considered putting lighting under the roof of the pavilion to cast down sort of an ambient light of where the building used to be. And then, we would be running electricity to the band shell as well with adequate number of outlets and lighting for evening performances. When we did our estimate, we incorporated some utility upgrades, bringing in a new transformer to carry the load of the new lights, a new water service box to feed the comfort stations. We, something that we included in the estimate, but we didn't really talk about is if the town wants to do irrigation. We've prepared a cost for that, but we didn't really explicitly incorporate it into the plan yet. But that would provide a better growing atmosphere for the lawn and plantings. So these are just a few images of what the park might look like. This one appears from the parking lot. Folks looking at the interpretive sign. This is not necessarily the pavilion that we would move into, you know, more detailed design, but we're assuming an asphalt shingle building here with wood columns and support. This one back here is looking back at the pavilion from the picnic area. And this is from the back corner near the pollinator garden, looking at both the shade structure and the band shell. And this is kind of an idea of what it might look like under the pavilion. We don't have one with the farmer's market, but we assume that this will be a large enough space for a farmer's market. A couple of night shots of a concert. My staff member took a little bit of creative license putting in these, I don't know what you call them, cocktail lights or whatever, but the idea is that this will be a very well-lit park, mostly for the security concerns. And then, this is the restroom facilities close to the parking for easy access. And here's kind of just an overview of the historical society and the parking layout. There are some inaccuracies here, there are some creative licenses, not perfectly accurate. There is a little driveway back behind this curb, but you can see the pavilion in the distance. If you've seen any of the other meetings, we've talked about these as design elements. This is an idea of the seat walls and the outline of the building, and interpretive sign it to pay significant recognition of the old primary school. Similar shades, shade shelter, and like I say, these are just ideas at this point. But, you know, in a further level of design, we can hash out exactly which type of shade shelter works best for the town. Our concept with the bandstand is that it would be of the same family as the shade shelter. And Tom had mentioned that it would be great if we had some removable panels in the back that could be installed during concerts to help deflect the sound towards the park, and then opened up later to open up the views. This is just an idea of stone seating, terracing on a slope, which we would love to do, programming with the farmer's market, lawns, trees, and pollinator gardens, strolling paths, benches, and picnic tables. This is the Portland Lou. It is a bit more expensive than the wood structure to the right, but there's possibly a value add in the fact that it's vandal-resistant and can be cleaned very easily, whereas a wood structure here might attract something, I don't know. Anyway, this was what we originally proposed and what was shown in our renderings. Site lighting can be either contemporary or more traditional, but this is about the height that we're thinking about. This is sort of a classical, you know, Boston light fixture in the Boston Common. So, the project, you know, in total, it's a big project, and one of the ideas that we'd like to introduce is, you know, possibly phasing the project over time. I don't have a sense of, you know, what your timeline is, and this allows you to do some things to kind of realize the final plan, you know, over a period of time to help finance it. But this is just one possibility, and it's very, it was very quickly done and not, you know, precisely estimated. But, you know, the first phase would be doing your hazardous materials abatement and demolition of the building. And then, the second phase would be to start to incorporate some park elements at the upper level. The third phase would be to bring in some more amenities with the band, the concert area, the restrooms, and then the fourth area is to do the roadwork. And I have distributed the cost estimate to Heather, and I'm assuming that it had been distributed to the Select Board. So I'm not going to go through, you know, very specific numbers, but kind of what we're looking at. We've taken the estimate that was prepared and added in all of the design contingencies and permitting and soft costs, and kind of portioned it to four phases. And in this particular slide, I've sort of done a project every year that doesn't necessarily have to happen that way. And per annum, my estimator tells me that you can expect a 4% increase in costs, you know, due to inflation and whatnot, escalation. So while the total number is a big number, at the end of the day, you will save it, but it's like you're kind of financing the project if you, you know, go with the inflationary costs. So we're looking at, you know, around 775, 780 for abatement and demolition. The Phase 2 project, you know, we would do the upper, the building footprint, the shade structure, probably try to get all the utilities in the ground at that point, and some of the upper pathway. Then Phase 3 would be completing the park. And then Phase 4 would be the roadwork aspect of it. So with that, I'm happy to take questions from the Board. I can pull up the plan, and...
Well, thank you first, Ms. Ray. Thank you for your presentation.
Yeah.
And your full explanation how we got here and what the vision is going forward, so I appreciate that. I will open it up to the Board if anybody has any questions for Mr. Dunnett. What is the presentation he just gave?
I don't have any questions. I will just comment that it appears he's incorporated everything that we requested, and I think it's a very thorough rendering at this point. Very pleased.
Thank you.
I'm going to second that as well. I have no questions at the moment, and that may change as the conversation goes forward, but I think this does a very nice job of incorporating everything.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, thank you. I'm usually known as the Selectman who asks a thousand questions, but I don't have any tonight. I really appreciate the work that you've done. I concur with Mr. Dwyer and Mr. Franco.
Thank you.
And in an effort not to be the odd person out, I also will echo those statements too. I think this is exactly what we have been discussing all along. I think this has been exactly what people have answered in the surveys and otherwise. The costs obviously are something that we are going to need to address as a town and as a Board and other Boards and committees having their discussions about it. But certainly Phase 1 is something we're looking at regardless, since we're looking, you know, we have an application to demolish the building, and the abatements are going to have to be done one way or another. So in a way, I don't even look at that as part of the project. That's something we were going to do, whether there's no project or not. At some point, we need to do that. So that leaves the other three phases as, in my mind, the cost of the project. It's probably a touch, not too much, but a touch higher than I would have thought going into it, but given the state of, you know, supply line and supplies in general right now, it probably fits in well. And to get what I think so many people have been looking for in this design, and we'll hear from them, of course, over the next course of the next week or a few weeks, I think that it's a valued price for what we would be gaining from it, what people have been looking from. So it not only addresses a building that people have been wanting to be addressed for some time now, but it addresses it in a positive way and looks for things to provide the townspeople with lots of elements of things they've been looking for for several, if not many years, some people. So I appreciate that, and thank you for that. I will open it up to the public, as this was a presentation for everyone. So if anybody is on Zoom and wants to speak, please raise your hand. Will we have this presentation on?
I just put it up.
Oh, okay. The answer is yes, we will have it on, and it's currently on the website.
It's under the news and announcements.
Under news and announcements, you'll see the presentation that Mr. Dunnett just gave. So let's look at the second bullet point of the workshop, which is discussion of timeline of the project in an article for Town Meeting. So I think that there should be some element of an article, and it depends on what we want the breadth or the scope to be. Certainly, at the very least, I think Phase 1, because again, that's something we need to do, and we've already put in the application with the Architectural Preservation District Committee for the demolition. So we should probably have an article ready for Town Meeting pending that determination by the APDC, at the very least. Now, if we want to incorporate more, I would certainly, you know, hear opinions from the Board and from the public about how they feel we should proceed from that, which I think is the starting point, at least in my estimation. Okay. So this is quiet time, okay. This will be a discussion. So at the very least, we should put an article on, and we'll discuss what the exact wording of the article is by the close of the warrant.
Yes. Probably in the next couple of meetings, since the warrant closes on the 21st.
Yes. So that would be, what is it, the?
The March 1st, March 8th, and 15th.
Yep. Okay. So those are the next steps then, too. So I think that is everything, unless I'll give one more opportunity of people to ask questions of anybody, including Mr. Dunnett or just in general?
I'll just ask it generally, more of a curiosity at this point. I don't want to get too deep into the weeds and into the design. But as far as the shade structure, if you did something with a metal roof versus an asphalt roof, is that more expensive initially but longer lasting? Is that?
I'd have to get back to you on that. I know that asphalt shingles have a 20-year warranty. The metal roof would probably, yeah, last. I would guess it would last longer than 20 years.
I think the answer to your question is yes and yes. It would cost more, and it would last longer.
Yeah, okay. It might just be nicer from a design perspective, too, but that's my own personal preference, so.
So, related to an article for Town Meeting, you know, in my mind, I think the next step is, since we're at that, you know, roughly 30% conceptual stage now, we need to move on to our next step. So I think one of the things that would be helpful is if we're going to put an article to understand what the remaining design costs are and to put a number to that, and that'd be something that we could carry at Town Meeting based on this concept, if they want to support it.
Yep.
And that's something I think we, you know, would like some direction from, or at least some input from Mr. Dunnett, in his view, as well as, you know, discuss how we're going to procure that. Are we going to put that back out to bids? Or are we happy with our currently engaged architect, and we're going to, you know, amend his contract, which would be my preference, but? But, you know, those are things that I think we need to consider.
I guess it would be on the procurement law, what that means.
It's allowable.
Yeah.
I would say the other article would be the demolition costs. Are the hazmat costs are covered under the capital plan?
Right.
Right now, with the demolition.
That's what I'm saying. I think that's the very least that we have to put on there.
Yeah.
I think that is the second article, is the design cost, the additional design costs, which I'm assuming are captured in those full costs. Is that correct?
Yeah, that, I mean, yeah, it's conservative estimate.
Okay.
And, you know, in some ways, in some ways, it makes sense to do the full design and then bid out, you know, whichever part. You know, instead of doing a cookie cutter, I mean, not cookie cutter, that's a piecemeal. That's, it could be, it could be done, because everything kind of ties together. So, and I'm not just saying this because I want to do the whole thing, I'm just saying it because, you know, like, we need to know where the utilities are going to be, you know, all the underground stuff. So I thought, I thought it might make a little bit of sense to just do it all at once than just coming back and trying to fit in what the master plan says. And then you, and then you would bid it out as separate bid documents, Phase One, you know, whichever, Phase One. You would just cross out everything that's in the future phases when you bid.
Sure.
But that's, you know, I'm open to conversations.
I have a question. I see there are a couple of people have their hands raised, but I do have a question. Because the Portland Lou's you have on the sewer, can they be, that site has had a septic, I don't know what the viability of that septic is now, we'd have to kind of test it, but can those be put on a septic field and forego a lengthy sewer extension to the building and to those locations?
Well, it's actually, it's actually not too bad. Can you see my, my hand? I think the sewer connection's right here to the, the sewer just goes right down School Street.
We can't see your screen, Mr. Dunnett.
You're going to share your screen.
Oh. I have to, it says I'm sharing.
Yeah, I can see your screen. I think it's a pad.
How about no?
It's just because it's not on pad.
There we go. There we go.
Okay. So the sewer manhole is right here, where my hand is.
Oh, so it's, oh, okay. The short run.
So it just goes, it just goes right down School Street.
Gotcha.
But I did, I did offer up initially the idea that these can be designed to be off the grid, on the grid. It could be tied into septic if, you know, we met all the health board codes and everything like that.
Sure.
We don't, we don't know the condition of it as of yet, but...
Well, if the sewer manhole is right there, then that's nothing.
Yeah.
Okay.
Exactly.
I thought it was longer. Mr. Jeffries?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. I agree with the approach recommended by Mr. Dunnett of, you know, having the whole thing designed at once and then maybe phasing in the use of that design. And I also just want to agree with what Mr. Dwyer had said to that point as well about taking that type of approach. So my only question to Mr. Dunnett is where you see other opportunities for value engineering? I know that Mr. Lonzil just mentioned, had one question, but if there are any other areas where you see opportunities for changes that would result in savings?
Yes, the restrooms, that alternative restroom that I showed you, the wood structure, is, I think, if you, let me look on my computer here, now, I can't pull it up right now, but the, on the estimate, I think there was significant savings if you did a wood structure, pre-manufactured, prefabricated wood structure as the restrooms over the Portland Lou's. But I'm assuming that they're less vandal proof. But that's one, that's one option. Less lighting could be another option.
I'm assuming that the choice in shade structures will vary wildly depending on what the materials and look and design of that are as well, correct?
Exactly. Exactly. I mean, although, although it wasn't, it wasn't a huge number for the shade structure, which I'm sort of surprised about, and in conversations with Rob, you know, we also talked about the curb work and the paving work could be done through the town's paving contract, which might be some savings there. We, we did, we did cost out pervious paving for the site to try to limit the amount of runoff coming off the top of the hill. We could go to just a regular asphalt, which would be saving money. The pervious itself isn't the expensive part, it's, it's got a deeper subgrade than a traditional asphalt path, which, you know, carries, which acts as like a little bit of an infiltration But the, I think, I think that's basically it. We showed unit pavers inside the building footprint, which could offer an opportunity for donations and donor bricks and that kind of thing. But, you know, we could go to concrete, just a plain concrete paving there. Once again, we get back into an impervious surface, but, you know, we're going to have to deal with, with the runoff from the roof and whatnot. So the pervious, the pavers, you know, provide like another pervious storage space. We were just trying to, trying to limit the number of utilities that we, that we had.
I have a follow-up, Mr. Dunnett.
Yeah.
You know, one of the things that I see in this plan is really an opportunity for, with all the trees that are looking to be planted, I know we're looking to have native trees, but it seems to be, you know, a great opportunity to have the community donate, perhaps, some of those trees, some of those benches. I'm not sure if our organic resources and DPW can plant the trees, that may save some costs as well. But I think, you know, I see a community approach to kind of furnishing this thing out. So my, my follow-up question then is water sources throughout the park. I know that you'd mentioned, you know, irrigation was not a cost that you carried with, were there other locations in the park, perhaps, near the pollinator garden or anywhere else where you anticipate having a source of water?
We did not. We did not, because we were really thinking of this as like a native, sustainable planting project. Now, grass, grass is, you know, standard turf is not in that category, does require water. But, you know, for a nice event lawn, even down near the bandshell, to have a nice carpet of grass to put a blanket down and watch a show, you know, it, it needs, it needs, there aren't like drought tolerant turf grasses. However, we can do drought tolerant pollinator plantings. We do them all the time and native, native trees, which don't require a lot of water. So we did not include any like hose dibs or anything like that. We typically do those for community gardening and that kind of thing that requires a lot of water.
My thought was not just on the plantings, but it was also having a source of water for cleaning, you know, like it's bills to be able to, you know, hose to wash down the sidewalk or...
Yeah.
To facilitate, you know, someone having a barbecue, you know, rinse down a picnic table or something.
We can certainly, we can certainly incorporate that into the next, next level. You know, we've got, we've got water there. It's just a connect, just a quick connection. I mean, we could probably put a, we could probably put a hose dib behind the porta-potties or the Portland Lou's as well, and you could run a hose over to the picnic table area.
Thank you, Mr. Dunnett. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Thank you. Mr. Passios?
Yes, thank you. Dave Passios, 56 Whiting Street. Most of my comments will be as a citizen of Lunenburg and a taxpayer of Lunenburg. I will mention also, because I am going to make the comment that I am part of the Parks Commission, a member of the Parks Commission. First of all, I'd like to congratulate Mr. Dunnett on this proposal. If Marshall Park comes out fulfilling the needs, wants, and what-ifs, as well as this did for this property, we're going to have two fantastic projects moving forward over the next couple of years. First of all, I agree that I think the efficiencies are in doing this project all at once. It's a pretty good chunk of money, I understand that, and, you know, that financing can be discussed going forward. I do ask that, I get the feel from the conversation in the last few minutes that there's a couple of members of this board that have a little bit of sticker shock and are already looking to cheapen the project or decrease the dollar, bad choice of words. My request is that you not cheapen the project, but find ways to save money. Don't save $100 to end up needing to do something for repair or renovation five years from now that costs $50,000, because we cheapened it on this end. The only last comment I'd like to make is that it might be consideration made depending on what type of a roof you end up with for the pavilion, especially if it's a continuous roof, uninterrupted area for solar panels for offset on power use. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Passios. Okay. Well, again, I want to thank everybody for their comments, their questions, and I think we have our next steps. Mr. Dunnett, once again, thank you for your presentation and your team's design. I would echo what many people said, most recently, Mr. Passios, that I think it really does a great job with the property, and it really has addressed so many of the aspects of items that people wanted to see there. So, and I look forward to taking it to the next step. I think we're going to look at the two warrant articles, at the very least, the one with the demolition and its cost, and then the other one with the full design cost that Mr. Dwyer introduced. And this board will discuss those over the next three of our meetings before the warrant is closed.
Well, thank you.
Of course, this will be, one last thing, this will obviously be on our agenda probably continually through, you know, through the budget time. Mr. Dunnett, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, I just wanted to thank, thank the board, thank the town. It's been a real pleasure working on this, and, you know, we're excited about the opportunity and making an impact here. So I think, I think it's, it's all good. And we look forward to whatever you decide. If we can be of further assistance, we would love to keep working on this. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any appointments?
No appointments.
No appointments. Any interviews or reappointments or resignations?
I do have one that's not on the agenda I learned of today. Regretfully, Mr. Rob Oliver, the DPW Director, has submitted his resignation. That will become, his last day will be March 11th. So the HR Director, Assistant Town Manager will be advertising that immediately.
I will call Mr. Oliver tomorrow. I wish him the best. I know he's moving to a job that's a lot closer to home and one that he had been looking for, for many years, so certainly understandable. It's a loss for us because he had done such a good amount of work and, and developed a great rapport with the townspeople and his staff, even in the, you know, 14 short months he's been here. So I'm sorry to hear the news, but we all understand. Town manager reports, report.
Existing vacancies, there are the following vacancies on committees and boards. Two vacancies on the Architectural Preservation District Commission, one vacancy on the Council on Aging, two vacancies on the Economic Development Committee, one regular member vacancy and two associate vacancies on the Green Communities Committee, one vacancy on the Housing Authority. This is a correction, so there on the website, it was advertised as the state appointment. It's actually one of the elected positions, so that's been corrected. The state appointment was filled by Deb Christian last year. The Parks Commission, there's one vacancy to be jointly appointed by the Select Board and Parks Commission until the annual town election. Two vacancies on the Stormwater Task Force and one associate vacancy for the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone interested can find the application forms on the town website, complete them and send them to the Select Board's office. If you have any questions regarding any of these committees or boards, please feel free to contact the Select Board's office at 978-582-4130, extension 144. For vacancies in employment of the town, we have the following vacancies, a digital services staff librarian position, an assistant to the sewer business manager position, minutes clerk, the principal assessor, trash and recycling coordinator, a van driver, videographers, and we'll be posting, like I said previously, the DPW Director position. Information on these vacant employment opportunities can be found on the town website under employment opportunities. That's an old. Electricity and natural gas. Our energy broker, Tradition Energy, will be soliciting bids for the town for electricity and natural gas, as our current contracts are expiring November 30th, 2022. Our broker believes we are better off to go out to bid this spring instead of waiting until summer or fall, due to the volatility in the market in the near term. Our current electricity rates for town and school properties are 9.4 kilowatts, kilowatt, 9.4 cents per kilowatt hours, and our natural gas rates for town and school properties are $5.19 per decotherm. Our electricity costs will not exceed the 11.2 cents that are, that we are able to realize under the municipal aggregation, so we know that for fiscal '23, it won't be higher than that, so we can opt into that program on the town accounts. So bids are expected to be received in March. An update on Meadowwoods Trailer Park. As agreed by the Select Board, the town has agreed to rescind the receivership for Meadowwoods and has entered into the payment agreement with Meadowwoods MHP LLC. The payment agreement stipulates an initial payment of $400,000 as a down payment to be applied as a partial payment to the delinquent sewer usage bills and on other previous years' old tax title receivables. Each year thereafter, on or before the anniversary date of the agreement, Meadowwoods will pay down $100,000 against delinquent taxes until the delinquent tax amount is paid off while keeping current with their other tax bills. The $400,000 payment was provided to the tax collector today upon execution of the agreement. So we are pleased to get this outcome with Meadowwoods and address their delinquent taxes in an expeditious manner. Extension of open meeting law requirements for remote participation and the quorum requirements at town meeting. On Saturday, Governor Baker signed a supplemental budget, which included a few changes to the open meeting law, extending the remote participation in open meetings until July 15th, 2022, reinstituting the ability of a select board to reduce the town meeting quorum requirement, and reinstating the remote option for representative town meetings, which that last part does not apply to Lunenburg as our open town form of government or town meeting. COVID-19 update, the weekly update from the Board of Health, the total number of new cases reported as of February 5th was 71, and the positivity rate was 8.73%. In other meetings, events, and announcements, there will be a tax lien auction on March 17th at 10:00 a.m. I already announced the town cox is March 14th at 6:30 p.m. at the middle... the Middle School High School Auditorium. This information has also been posted on Facebook with all the elected positions. And the warrant submit articles for the town meeting is due by March 21st at 4:00 p.m. I will be visiting the English Community Service Learning and Civics class this Thursday to discuss needs in the community, thanks to Mrs. Foyle's class, which I've enjoyed going to each year. And I'm attending the Personnel Committee meeting and Conservation Commission meeting tomorrow night, and the Finance Committee meeting Thursday night. Any questions?
Any questions for the Town Manager? Seeing none. Current business, thank you, Madam Town Manager. Discussion on 30 School Street and Certificate to Alter application. Everybody on the board should be aware that the board, the Architectural Preservation District Commission, has reversed their decision about that our application was not complete, and now they are accepting it as complete. And they have scheduled the hearing, the opening of the hearing on this certificate to alter for March 10th at the Ritter Building at 7:30 p.m. So, anybody out there who has something to say about 30 School Street and the building there, and the Select Board's request to demolish the building, can speak their mind then, as will, as the Architectural Preservation District Commission will be hearing and discussing this certificate. Any comments or questions from the board? Okay. A review of the tax lien sales list request and opens, oh, let's try that again. Review of the tax lien sale list and a request from the Open Space Committee.
Yes. So, in your drive, you have a list of the properties that are under tax lien that are to be included in the tax lien sale on March 17th.
Can you explain to people at home what this tax lien sale is, like what this does?
So, the, a tax lien sale is not, is not a foreclosure. So, it's people who have been delinquent on their taxes that a certain procedure the tax collector follows through each year. And if they have not paid delinquent taxes for a period of time, their property is advertised. A company or individuals can come and bid on either a bundle of properties or individual, and then the property owners have to pay that individual or company, or that individual or company can move it towards foreclosure versus the town. The town in that case receives the full value. So, they'll receive all outstanding taxes and fines and fees for that property versus a foreclosure, which we may not realize the full, recoup the full amount.
And in any regard, the taxes, the properties continue to owe taxes to the town on an annual basis regardless?
Right.
Okay.
But they're caught up at time of tax.
Right. So, it's benefit for the town because whoever buys the liens will pay the town, and they take it upon themselves to collect the money.
Right.
Okay.
And I know we have our tax, treasurer tax collector here tonight on Zoom, as well as our finance director, and someone from Mike Tuohy from Conservation Commission?
So, does?
I'm sorry, Open Space?
So, does our tax collector or finance director, or anybody wish to say anything about this item?
This is Mike Tuohy from Open Space. I'd like to address the item, please.
Sure. Mr. Tuohy.
Turn on my camera there. Last week, the Open Space Committee met, and there are four properties on the tax lien list that we're asking the town to defer any action on. All four of these properties have great potential for open space for the community, and we ask that the Board of Selectmen remove these four properties from the tax lien sale. And I can talk about each individual property if you'd like.
Well, first, I'm going to ask, have they been removed already, or?
No.
Okay, so these, we're looking at four properties, is that correct, total?
Yes.
Oh, no, that's the open space list. Where's the total list? Yeah, oh, tax sale list, okay, there we go. I was looking at the wrong one.
Mr. Chair, I have a process question prior to, I think, us going into these four properties. My question is on when we, as I understand, we're going to be asked to take some items off of the list tonight. My, and I don't understand, so if you can help me understand, what is, what, I believe I just heard the Town Manager say that the tax collector is the one who puts these properties on the list, but is there another process of, in other words, does the Select Board have to approve this list, or is that fully within the functions of the tax collector?
The Selectmen have the ability to ask the tax collector to hold, remove that from the tax sale auction.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Are you looking at the right one? I had put in two.
Oh, okay.
So, which one?
Let's see, because this one...
You're on the right one.
Yeah, but mine doesn't, it's showing, like, doesn't show property numbers for the last few. The parcels, like, are in commas.
Yeah.
Can I share my screen, Mr. Chair?
Sure.
You gotta, it's shortened.
Oh, okay.
Plus, minus, because it condensed them.
Okay. Mike wants to share his screen. Can we allow him that? Okay, you should be able to share your screen now.
Thank you. I thought maybe this would help. I have some screenshots of the individual parcels to discuss. You should be able to see the tax lien list?
Yep.
And what I've done is I've highlighted in yellow the four properties that we are asking the board to consider. They are 356 Hollis Road, 250 Hollis Road, 56 Carr Avenue. All of the, all three of those parcels are adjacent to each other, so it forms one larger parcel. This is 4.7 acres, 19 acres, and 11 and 1/2 acres. And then 101 Pleasant Street is a separate parcel that's up adjacent to some existing town open space.
So, I would ask the Town Manager, okay, go ahead. Do you have, obviously, further slides here? Go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a couple of those I can show you.
Sure.
So, this just happens to be 56 Carr, but the properties that are adjacent to each other are this property here, number 43, this property, and then this property here. So, this forms a block just off from Whalen Lake, and, I mean, you know how densely developed this area is. And one of the things about this particular area, back, share something else with you. This shot is from the town open space document, and this is, this purple circle here circles those three parcels that I just talked about. And you can see, this is, these are the open space parcels in the town, the colored parcels in the town. And there's just a, you know, paucity of parcels down in this part of town, and it's a very heavily developed part of town. So, adding some open space to this area of the community would be extremely beneficial. And then the Pleasant Street parcel is this parcel right here, and it's adjacent to another parcel of town open space. This is, John Fitch Highway is right over here, so this is Mass Ave. So, again, this is in, this is in an area where there is some open space, but this would be a nice add in this area. And we're not obviously asking for you as board tonight to add these parcels, but we're asking for you to defer putting these out to tax lien sale, because then they will most likely become private, which is fine, but then that precludes any of these parcels, and then this area right in here in this circle from the potential for becoming public open space in an area of the town that could really use some additional open space.
Okay, so, I'm trying to, how does the Open Space Committee foresee that they could become open space without us outright buying it? Or are you saying that we should enter into foreclosure on our own? Is that what you're suggesting?
That's an option, but more, more importantly, if it goes to tax lien sale, it forecloses any of the options in the future for adding this to open space. There could be options of working with the property owners, working through grants to get money to buy these parcels, you know, the town itself through grant process. There are different ways that the town could acquire this property for open space in the future. But if it goes to tax lien sale, and it's bought by a private developer, and that area by Whalen Lake, you know, those 40 acres there becomes developed, that's a lost opportunity.
I just want to bring up another list that, the previous list of properties?
Sure.
That Conservation, that's also in the drive. It's not included in that folder. It's a singular document, copy of BOS Conservation.
Which one is this?
If you exit that folder.
Oh, okay.
And it's a singular, yeah.
Gotcha. No, it's not.
So, each time that the tax collector has done a tax lien sale, this has come before the appropriate boards for review, and if any parcels were requested, and at that time the Select Board had agreed to remove certain properties and move them towards foreclosure. And we have foreclosed on a few properties. But I just want to put this in context as far as the number of other properties that are going through this process already for Conservation purposes or open space.
Well, three of these are the same, three of these properties are exactly the ones that the Open Space just mentioned, from this Conservation, right? This 56 Carr Ave and the 21 Hollis Road, 356 and 250.
Pleasant Street's on there, so all the ones that he presented.
Right. So, all the ones that he's presented are on this list?
Not all, no. And there's ones in addition, so... I'm sorry. Mylene can?
Yes. So, I think the one that, I don't know of what you're looking at, but the one that I just recently submitted?
Yes.
Has all the, I added in the list is the four recommendation that I just recently received from the Open Space Committee. But as you can see in my memo, it says open space recommendation, because I have to wait for, you know, the Select Board to, to give me the approval that this is going to be approved in order for us to move forward on the, to the request of the Open Space Committee. I just want to add something. In the total, as you can see, the total, if, if you can filter out those four properties, the town will be losing 323,000 from principal fees and interest if this is going to move on to foreclosure. Adding into that is, the town already spent money for the purposes of foreclosure, thinking that we can able to have the homeowner come forward, you know, about this property that they have. But I put a hold on the foreclosure to get the judgment, because I was thinking that if we put them in the tax lien sale foreclosure, tax lien sale auction, the town will get every penny that is owed on their taxes. And if those highest bidder will able to collect or something from the taxpayer, or if they even foreclose it, it would go back to the tax roll, to the town to collect, you know? And I also asked some questions that these properties can be buildable, and it can able to collect and add more collection to the town. As Ms. Heder said, we already been foreclosing a lot on the list to the board's conservation list and everything for open space. I think we have to remember that the town should add more tax roll, you know, put more tax roll for the town, and not everything has to be in office space, open space things. But of course, you know, whatever the board thinks of what is best for the town is going to be, what's going to be done, so.
Sure. I have a question from anybody who can answer this. The four, the four properties that the Open Space Committee wants to remove from this list, at least put on hold from this list, are there active residents on any of those four, or are they all open land?
There is a, most of the property under, it's not opening again, but anyway, the 30, 56 Carr Ave, 250 Hollis Road, and three are land only, as you can see in my other list, it says land only, and it's owned by Bragna and the trustees.
Oh, okay, so, all right, so there's one that has a building?
Yes. 356 Hollis Road is the Lake Lodge, I believe.
Okay.
Correct.
But it's not, it's more like a business. It's not really the...
It's not a residence, right.
Exactly.
Yeah, none of residential.
Right. And then 101 Pleasant Street is, I think it's near 265 Pleasant Street Solar. It's on that. I think I submitted a copy of the map where they are located.
It's also in the drive.
Yep.
Yeah. So, you can see, you know, and then in the middle of those 250 Hollis Hill, 56 Carr Ave, 356 Lake Lodge is AT Carr Ave, which is where the residential is. But I think it's in the map, there's a small, you know, I think that's where the real supposed to be if to access the property, but I think they don't use that because they use the 356 Hollis Road.
Right. So, if we were, Mylene, if we were to take this, those four off, what is the negative part of taking those four properties the Open Space Committee is requesting? What is the negative of taking them off this list?
Sure. So, the town, when we go to foreclosure, when we ask for judgment, the town, hold on, let me just, let, I'll try to see my Excel again, hold on. For some reason, it's not popping up back. Anyways, oh, there it is. I can't see. I'm having a freeze on my computer, but besides the 300-something thousand, which is included interest and everything, I think it's somewhere about, if I'm not mistaken, since I cannot see my screen at the moment.
Mylene, do you want Karen to?
Yeah, if you could. Yeah, I was just going to say the principal, the town will lose how much, I want to say... Yeah, I was just going to say the principal, the town will lose how much, I want to say how much the town will lose on the principal of the real estate taxes, because what happens is those funds will be in the foreclosure receivables or, and then if it will be town-owned and then we decided to put it under conservation, I think they have to be, they will be negative, they have to be removed because until they're town-owned, they don't have to pay taxes.
Right.
So one other part, moving them through foreclosure is the cost of foreclosing on them, the tax.
The town will.
Attorney to do that, so that's, Myleene, you've estimated around 5,000 per parcel, depending on the parcel, it's complex, you know, they're all different. And Karen can confirm this as well, I would assume would affect our overall valuations for property.
Well, I mean, I think that would be true as well, but one of the things that I just, and Myleene can probably answer this better than me, is if the open space committee is interested in these properties, putting them through the tax lien sale isn't going to disallow them from still maintaining interest in the properties. It's going to benefit the town because we're going to receive the $331,000 that they owe in taxes. The taxes are going to remain current, the owners of the property will hopefully retain ownership because, I mean, based on what's happened in the past when we've done a tax lien sale is, and that was stated by, I think, Myleene, when you talked, when you spoke with Cowidge, they told you that with the tax lien sale, they didn't, or at least to the best of our knowledge, they didn't foreclose on any of the properties. The people who owned the properties paid the taxes current, and I think in some instances the lien from Cowidge was released because the property taxes were current and the residents and owners of the properties were all set. So, I mean, from my perspective, I think that the best thing to do with the properties is leave them on the tax lien sale, go forward with this, and like I said, I don't think it's going to prevent the open space committee from still retaining interest in the property should at some point we have to foreclose or do anything like that, but for the town to pass up the opportunity to collect this, these back taxes, I don't know, it just seems crazy to me. We're not in the business of owning real estate and I would think we would want to keep these parcels on the active tax rule and current with their taxes because it's beneficial to the town that they are.
Let me, thank you, Karen, let me ask you a technical question then. If we, if somebody buys the tax liens, they are not the property owner yet, still, right?
They have to bring it to foreclosure.
Right, all they're doing is, they're doing the same thing that Myleene does, trying to collect back taxes, but the difference is they're paying the town for those back taxes and then they're approaching the owners of the property to collect.
Right, right. Do they pay them, do they pay the back taxes upfront and do they maintain the newer, the new taxes every year or just, they just buy the liens as they are right now and not any future taxes?
The law, the law into, before, when we did in 2018, that's the law, but there's a new law that the new, the new taxes has to be lien, lien again, and if we have, if there's a back taxes on a new taxes now, they have to be auction again to transfer, you know, for the lien. So they will not, they are not liable for the new taxes, but the town can put a lien again, and then we have to put them again on tax lien sale.
Does, let me go back to your list, does the list show what the valuation of the land is?
Oh, well, I don't think so, it doesn't say. I showed the acreage and the square foot, I think, but not the valuation of assessment, if that's what you're asking for.
Yeah, because, I mean, I'm looking at, I'm just going to take a property, I'm not going to say who it is or where it is of these four, but, you know, one of the properties has with principal due and interest due $90,000. Well.
Right, and keep in mind those are land only.
Well, that's land only, and if, so if they have $90,000 in back, in back taxes and interest and somebody buys the lien, what is the chance that the property owner is going to come up with $90,000 to keep it? So I got to believe that the people who are doing it are, who would buy the lien would be interested in the property. Now, this property was the site of a very, very contentious housing development many, many years ago, and personally, I wouldn't want to see this happen again by somebody doing this, so there's part of me, at least, that wants to consider more of what the open space committee is considering or asking, because these three contiguous properties were all part of a larger development that did not get built.
Right, because you're, as you see, there's 41 acreage in 101 Pleasant Street, there's 11 acreage in 56, 56 Carav, and 19 acreage in 250 Hollis Road, so, and they are all buildable, so.
Right.
If this is purchased by somebody and it can be built, you know, I just don't know how, what they're going to build if it's residential or it's just, that I can't tell. But it may play a role on tax rule if those are residential, especially when they're so big of an acreage.
Right, well, these properties were the subject of a proposed 40B that caused a lot of problems with the town many years ago.
Michael Ray.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, looking through the list, I think that we, I'm a little concerned that we're looking to have a sale in a month's time, you know, I think that some of these properties, I would think that the town may, the select board may want to take a look at this list a little bit more in advance prior to it being listed for sale, because there are some properties that may be of general municipal purposes that, you know, we may see some value in, but also there are some properties up here that are a little concerning to sell, specifically 991 Lancaster Ave, I mean, that's Stillman's Farms, and I don't think any of us want 90 acres of Stillman Farms to get sold along Lancaster Avenue. You know, so I think there's other properties on this list that we need to take a look at and, you know, and ideally that, in my opinion, maybe should happen before we go out to tax lien sales, but I would be interested in holding a couple of properties just because I have some questions about them.
Peter.
Anybody up from the board?
Other than to say I'm completely torn between these two sets of considerations, they're both making good points, so I don't know how I would view this at the moment. I think I just need to digest this. What's our, when does this decision have to be made?
When is the tax lien presented?
March 17th is the sale, so we can pull them at any time prior to then, right, Myleene?
That is correct.
Yeah.
Before March 7th.
Personally, I like Michael Ray's sentiment and Lou's as well, that we digest this a little bit and dig into some of these properties and then reconsider this in our next meeting.
Okay, I would ask that the, Mr. Toohill, if you, as a representative of the open space committee, I'd like to get something in writing about what your logic is and what your reasoning is for wanting it pulled and why you believe going forward with the tax title would be detrimental to that, and I'd ask anybody who wants to pull anything, so from the board members, I'd like to know why they would want something pulled and what the reasoning is and why, you know, delaying it would be beneficial or a detriment from anybody. And Myleene and Karen, if you have, you know, feelings about this too strongly, you know, again, I'd ask the same thing, because we're in a, I don't think I've ever been in this position before where we've gone through this extensive list and maybe with this kind of scrutiny, but now that it's being brought up, I'd like to make sure that we, we make the right decisions and for the right reasons.
I think, just said, and this list probably will change between now and our next meeting as well, because these properties have been advertised, correct, Myleene?
No, they're going to be advertised on February 17.
Okay, so.
But they've been in the paper already once, haven't they?
They will be, but that is okay, that will be okay if they're going to be advertised because we can always still pull them up before the auction.
Yeah.
So my point was that people will probably pay between now and the tax.
That is correct.
Yeah, but I think the one, the ones that anybody's going to come and pull out the money to pay for aren't the ones that we're talking about, because those are the ones that are $200,000 back, $90,000, let's see what some of the other ones are.
Now, I want to add something.
The one is $18,000 maybe.
I want to add something also, that some of this property, there's a federal tax lien in them, just so you know, but I do believe that the town tax-taking lien supersede, you know, even the Fed lien and mass lien, so I just want to add that.
Oh, I appreciate that.
Myleene, are any of these properties, were they in the tax sale lien previously?
Yeah, some of them are repetitive, so in 2018, when we did this in June, there's four of them that was, you know, sold in a high speeder, but they end up paying them, so they, they were able to redeem back their property. The highest bidder were not able to foreclose them, so that's what I, I heard and when I talked to the high speeder, so.
Okay.
Do you happen to know those addresses or could you get them for the board for their next meeting?
Yeah, I think there's two of them that's still on the list, 248 Pleasant Street and also the condominium under Girlish, James Girlish, I believe, I forgot the address.
27 Elizabeth Street?
Yeah.
That's a building.
Mr. Beardmore.
Thank you for recognizing me. I think you're moving in the right direction by not making a decision on this tonight. I've listened very intently for the last several minutes and I'm sufficiently confused on a number of issues in terms of how this works and what the ramifications are, and as a finance committee member, I don't know if this would be appropriate for the finance committee, but as a, as a citizen, I'm very interested in this. First of all, 101 Pleasant Street is not adjacent to 265 Pleasant Street. It's adjacent to town-owned land, which is also adjacent to another development project which may or may not be the same owner, I'm not sure, that is, that is underway. The properties on Hollis Road and Carr Street are, were all involved in the Hollis Road development that was proposed about 15 years ago that we went into litigation for 10 years on. So I understand the tax collector's interest in collecting taxes, but I'm also very interested in what goes on to those properties and the services that are required to service those properties once they're developed. The west end of Lunenburg has seen an enormous amount of development over the course of the last 20 years, mostly driven by the availability of sewer, and if you go and talk to the superintendent of schools or the fire chief or the police chief, they will tell you that those developments, while certainly increasing the tax rolls, are also drawing on town services considerably, and I think that that needs to be taken into consideration. I'm very interested in those properties being used for open space. I really appreciate the work of the open space committee and Mr. Toohill for bringing this to our attention. I'm very interested in the avenue of foreclosure as opposed to domain or a sale, and I think that a analysis, a clear analysis that can be presented that somebody like me could understand would be very much appreciated before this decision is made. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore.
You forego the tax.
Right, but if we think about that, okay. I think there's enough for us to discuss here and I appreciate everybody's perspective and, and again, I know that the finance director and the tax collector accountant is working on the town's behalf on that regard about, you know, getting things on the tax rule, and I appreciate their perspective and I think the open space committee takes a different perspective, and I think we as select board have to really weigh all that to decide what is best. I think that I would go ahead with the advertisements as long as we can pull properties at the last minute, and over the next couple of meetings, we will have to have a further discussion about this and evaluation about how we feel about all these different viewpoints and how they weigh on our decision. So I want to thank everybody for their time here. It is valuable for us to hear all those different viewpoints because they're all coming at it from different places with different, different goals in mind. So let's put this off till, and keep this on the meeting. Okay, on to the town manager's FY23 preliminary budget presentation.
Shall we reserve our questions, Mr. Chair, till the end?
I'll ask the town manager, would she prefer?
Yes.
Yes.
Let me see. There we go. Is everyone at home seeing a full screen?
Not yet.
Okay. Let me see if I do this. All right, thank you. So my recommendation for the fiscal '23 budget, I'll start with the timeline to date. So the capital planning committee met, began meeting in September and they met with all the departments through November and December, and I sent target budgets to departments in December and they were due back January 12th. The capital planning committee finalized the prioritization of projects for the fiscal '23 capital plan on January 4th, and I presented the capital plan for fiscal '23 and the five-year financial forecast in January, and as required by charter, presenting the preliminary budget The goal in preparing the recommendation was to create a balanced budget, the fund's operating budgets use recurring revenues at current service levels with some exceptions. The original target budget used in December and preliminary budget use conservative revenue projections. It meets the town's financial policies. It uses a goal of smart growth to ensure long-term fiscal sustainability, and certified free cash is not used on the operating budget and abides by the town's financial policies, including $1 million of free cash towards capital, $266,696 of free cash towards OPEB liability costs, which is 10% of the previous year's certified free cash, $100,000 of free cash deposited into the regular stabilization account, and $250,000 of free cash deposited into the special purpose stabilization account. Looking at the target budget on the revenue side, property taxes included 2.5% to the, of the previous year's levy, $213,540 for new growth and the debt exclusion amounts for state aid, it level funded the state aid based on the fiscal '22 state aid figures that were approved in July 2021, and for local receipts, it included an additional $50,000 increase over the previous year's motor vehicle excise taxes, but level funded all other local receipt categories. For other available funds, the target budget did not address using free cash and other sources of available funds is similar to previous fiscal year sources. On the expenditure side, level funded cherry sheet offset numbers, state and county charges, and choice and charter assessments using the fiscal '22 amounts. Departments were sent target budgets in December, that included all known contractual increases and level funded other expense categories, except it included costs for a half a year. and level-funded other expense categories, except it included costs for a half a year for a full-time patrolman and one full-time career firefighter paramedic, additional fifty thousand for pavement management, the known principal and interest debt payments for fiscal twenty-three. It included eight percent rate increase for health insurance for active employees and a five percent rate increase for retirees, five percent increase for general insurances, and included a ten percent increase for Worcester County Retirement and two and a half percent increase for the Lunenburg Public Schools and Monty Tech. The preliminary budget versus the target budget, on the revenue side, we received a state aid, um, the governor's proposal, which was an overall increase of nine hundred and forty-nine thousand, seven hundred and thirty-four dollars, or ten percent more than the previous year. For new group, new growth, it assumed, uh, the two hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty-three dollars. We're gonna continue to monitor this and adjust if needed based on, um, building permits and, um, projected construction that would be completed. On the expenditure side, the cherry sheet offsets and state assessments uses the governor's state proposal, state aid proposal. For health insurance, it assumes a six percent rate increase for active employees and five percent for increase for retirees. We received actual, uh, or actual insurance renewal today that came in at five point five, six percent, so we were right, uh, there with our assumption in the preliminary budget. For liability and workers' comp insurance, this assumes a five percent increase. Renewals are received in late March, and the police and fire injured on duty insurance is level-funded. For Monty Tech, it includes a twenty-one percent increase. Assessments are received at the beginning of March, and it, um, we know that there'll be annual town meeting articles that will require funding as well. That's an unknown. So when we look at the revenues for property tax, um, in the recommend, recommended budget, we have thirty million, eight hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and ninety-five dollars. State aid at ten million, three hundred and ninety thousand, one hundred and five dollars. Local receipts at three million, one hundred and ten dollars, one hundred and ten thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars. Other available funds, three million, one hundred and thirty-three thousand, eight hundred and fifty-five dollars, for a total of forty-seven million, four hundred and eighty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars. This is a breakdown of our revenues, um, percentage-wise. We received sixty-five percent of our revenues from property taxes, twenty-two percent from state aid, six percent from local receipts, seven percent from available funds. This slide is, uh, just a breakdown of the property tax, state aid, local receipts, and available funds. Just to highlight, state aid was, it was much greater than the fiscal twenty-two increase. Our estimates for local receipts remains conservative, as these are elastic revenues, and available funds is similar to the previous fiscal year. So this is a further breakdown of property tax, um, which shows the prior year base, adding two and a half percent, our estimate for new growth, and our amounts for debt exclusions, as well as, uh, that gives us our total maximum allowable levy limit of thirty million, eight fifty-four, seven ninety-five. This slide is, uh, history of new growth, so you can see three-year, five-year, and ten-year averages for new growth. Um, our financial projection, uh, use three hundred thousand going out for, uh, future years. Um, that's what we've used conservatively for estimates. So as I said, we'll continue to monitor new growth and adjust it as needed. First, state aid. It, our proposal uses the governor's state aid number, which was released on January twenty, twenty-six. This provided an additional eight hundred and ninety-eight thousand, six hundred and ten dollars in chapter seventy funds, which was eleven point five percent increase for chapter seventy over the previous fiscal year, and thirty-one thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars in unrestricted general government aid, which is a two point seven percent increase for an overall increase of ten percent over the previous fiscal year. This slide just is a breakdown of our history of state aid and the different categories. For local receipts, this number was increased by fifty thousand for motor vehicle excise, with all the other remaining categories level-funded, and this is a one point six percent increase over the previous year's estimates. Another slide that shows a breakdown of actual versus estimates. This was used in the financial forecast as well. For available funds, the preliminary budget uses one million, six hundred and sixteen thousand, six hundred and ninety-two dollars from certified free cash. As I said, that's being, uh, proposed to be used on capital, OPEB, the special purpose stabilization, and the regular stabilization account. It uses forty thousand, forty-nine dollars from unexpendited capital from previous fiscal years towards the fiscal twenty-three capital plan. It has the reimbursement from MSBA for an old, uh, school building project for a total of five hundred and thirty-four thousand, five hundred and one dollars. And that, um, sorry. The, that expires in two thousand twenty-three. It includes the water and sewer abatements, um, which is the fully, uh, full funds associated with the debt service for water and sewer debt. It includes the sewer enterprise funds that cover indirect costs related to the sewer, public access enterprise funds that covers their indirect costs, and it transfers forty-two thousand, one hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-four cents from the artificial turf revolving fund to pay for the turf field debt for fiscal twenty-three. This slide's, uh, breakdown, um, showing the available fund categories, um, in the previous fiscal years. The next two slides are, are dedicated to other funds that are, go towards the budget that you don't see in the appropriation that's voted at town meeting, all the different grants and earmarks the town receives, all the departments, um, this uses fiscal twenty-two. So the police received a, uh, well, they applied for the Department of Justice Bulletproof Vest Grant this year. Uh, waiting on that, um, grant application, the fire received multiple grants, as you can see in the list, for their department, the DPW, they just applied for the small bridge program for Flat Hill Culvert, up to five hundred thousand dollar grant. The library receives state aid, um, that's an offset receipt, as well as other donations from the Friends of the Library gift fund, and they have a revolving fund. The senior center has applied for and received multiple grants, as well as gift funds from different organizations as well. Uh, in the town manager's office, we received the recycling dividends program grant, uh, grants from Maya, our insurance company, for both risk management and wellness. The school, this outlines the different grants that they have received through ESSER, uh, elementary and secondary school emergency relief funds. Um, there's been different tranches, so it's, uh, this is the second and third, um, as well as other COVID grants, state grants and federal grants. And we also received ARPA funding in about three point five million. And, uh, we received a ARPA fund from the state for the hazardous materials abatement at thirty School Street, as well as the earmark for the library for the LED lighting. When we go on to the expenditures, we know that expenditures are a reflection of the cost of providing a level of services to residents of all ages in our community, to visitors traveling or doing business in Lunenburg, and maintaining or improving our assets. As a town, we provide services to students. We provide health and human services to seniors and veterans, recreational services, and public safety to all. And the balance is to provide the best services possible, given the available resources, maintain our assets, and plan for the future by putting funding into reserves. Expenditures are divided into categories, so it's, uh, departmental expenses, non-appropriate expenses, expenses such as cherry sheet offset charges, allowances for abatements, tax title, retirement assessment, sewer enterprise fund, water enterprise fund, the solid waste disposal enterprise fund, cable access enterprise fund, and other warrant articles that have a financial impact. That also includes stabilization accounts, OPEB trust fund, and the capital plan. For the target budget, what was included was an additional thirty thousand for an additional patrol officer for half a year, an additional career firefighter for seventy thousand, an additional fifty thousand for pavement management, a two and a half percent increase for the Lunenburg Public Schools, which equated to five hundred and forty-one thousand, a two and a half percent increase for Monty Tech, which equated to twenty-two thousand. Worcester Regional Retirement Assessment, a ten percent increase, which was approximately a hundred and fifty-three thousand. And health insurance was based on a, uh, the target budget was based on eight percent rate increase for active and five percent for retirees, which equated to a hundred and forty thousand dollar increase. When we look at the preliminary budget proposal, the, under general government, it funds the target and above target requests for a part-time technical support position, a part-time clerical position for conservation, addresses wages for registration workers, additional hours for the assistant tax collector, and increases in software, hardware, website, and internet costs under IT. For the police department, it funds the target for additional full-time officer for half a year, an above-target request for a part-time clerical position, the cost for leasing a motorcycle, and funds for the retirement of an officer, and addresses the animal control officer wages. For the fire department, it funds the target budget and ten thousand of above-target requests. For facilities, it funds the target and eighty-five thousand of above-target requests for a facilities director position. For the DPW, includes an additional fifty thousand for pavement management. For council on aging, it includes restructuring the meal site manager program by adding a new part-time position. For the veterans, um, service agent, it addresses the wages. For the library, includes adding two part-time library positions to open on Fridays, related heating costs, and an increase in programming funds. A, the CW Mars cost to, is increasing due to the population, uh, that's per their schedule, and it exceeds the minimum sixteen percent towards library materials. For Worcester Regional Retirement, our assessment came in at ten point three-two percent increase, or a hundred and fifty-eight thousand more than the previous fiscal year. For health insurance, um, it included a six percent rate increase, which will be adjusted to the five point five-six percent increase for active employees and five percent rate increase for retirees for an overall increase of a hundred and twenty-four thousand, one forty-one. And for the Lunenburg Public Schools, the recommendation fully funds the superintendent's proposed budget of a three point one-one percent increase for an additional six hundred and seventy-three thousand, six hundred and seventeen dollars. And for Monty Tech, the recommendation includes a twenty-one percent increase for a hundred and eighty thousand, seven hundred and one dollars. This slide is just a breakdown of the different categories of expenditures and shows the dollar increase over the previous fiscal year, as well as, um, the percentage of the total dollar increase, uh, which each category, um, came up to. This slide is on the nondiscretionary expenses, our debt service, and our total appropriation for fiscal twenty-three for debt service is four million, four hundred and ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-three dollars. This slide, it looks familiar, I'm sure. It's also in the financial forecast. And, um, we've examined this slide many times in different iterations of trying to look at debt. So it just shows our debt ratios, um, as far as our, uh, with our, that relate to our policy on debt. For expenditures that are nondiscretionary, and general government unclassified, this includes insurance. Uh, like I said, we included five percent for liability and workers' comp. The injured on duty is level-funded, and health insurance, which I've gone over those, uh, rate increases. As far as a breakdown, I just wanna highlight, uh, the breakdown of health insurance. Thirty-four percent of our health insurance budget is for active town employees. Seventeen is retiree health insurance for town employees, and forty-nine percent is retiree health insurance for school employees. The active portion is approximately eight hundred and twenty-eight thousand out of the two point four-five million. School retirees account for one point two five, one point two million, and town retirees account for four hundred and forty-four thousand. Retiree's renewal is on a calendar year basis, so this is, uh, we're estimating a five percent based on our history. This slide is just a breakdown of our Worcester County Retirement Assessment, of our active members, retired members, um, and so forth. They give a complete breakdown when we receive our assessment, as well as the payments towards, um, our, uh, breakdown of our assessment costs. And we receive an early payment discount by paying on July first, so we always do that. And here's a complete breakdown, um, of those by town, sewer, school, and town slash sewer, so, um, employees that were both town and school. When we look at non-appropriate expenditures, these include cherry sheet charges, offsets, the overlay and tax title. And you can see the cherry sheet charges increased and cherry sheet offsets decreased for an overall decrease of thirty-three thousand, six forty-six. And the overlay account is funded at a hundred and twenty thousand, and tax title has been increased by five thousand, so from twenty-four thousand to twenty-nine thousand. This slide is a breakdown of capital, um, and prior year expenses, OPEB liability stabilization, special purpose stabilization, and last year we had, um, deposited money into a health insurance stabilization account. And the capital plan proposed at this time, which, um, I expect we'll be revisiting based on, um, our revenues available at this time. So to recap, uh, the budget, uh, that is being recommended tonight, it includes one additional police officer for half a year, one additional career firefighter, creates a new full-time facilities director position, creates part-time clerical support for the police department and conservation. It restructures the council on aging meal site program by adding a part-time position, creates a part-time technical support position, creates two part-time library positions, so they can open on Fridays, adds four hours for the assistant tax collector, addresses wages for various staff that were being paid less than the state minimum wage. And includes the schools, uh, school superintendent's three point one-one percent budget and a twenty-one percent increase for Monty Tech assessment based on the minimum required. And just to recap further, um, the superintendent's budget, um, that was, the budget that was proposed in January, and any further reductions in active health insurance will increase funds available for the fiscal twenty-three operations. And this, that budget includes five new positions through local appropriation and three new positions through grant funds. And they will be seeking additional grant funds that become available, um, in the future. Monty Tech, this twenty-one percent increase, um, is based on the minimum required amount that we can see through the DUCY, um, site, as well as I talked to the, the business manager. So it's our minimum required, um, contribution, as well as ca, cost for capital and transportation. So it's our minimum required contribution, as well as cost for capital and transportation. The next two slides are just from the DUCY website, just shows the required local contribution for education, breakdown of the fiscal '23 apportionment, and it shows both Lunenburg Public Schools and MONI Tech for our total required contribution. The $21,847,900, that's the total foundation, and if you subtract out the Chapter 70 funds that are in the governor's proposal, that's where you get the required contribution of And this slide just depicts Lunenburg's MONI Tech minimum contribution for fiscal '23. It's highlighted. So that doesn't include transportation and capital costs. So to conclude, the proposal includes the governor's budget proposal, which these figures are subject to change due to the legislative process. It fully funds all contractual obligations and increased costs for non-personnel-related expenditures. It's a balanced budget approach using recurring revenues for operating costs and no draw-on stabilization fund or free cash for operating expenses. It maintains existing staff with three full-time employees and six part-time employees for town, and the preliminary budget is the same as the superintendent's proposed fiscal '23 budget. It leaves an unappropriate balance of $514,000 that can backfill any unknown increases, increased funding for capital, and any funding, funding needed for the annual town meeting articles, and it leaves a balance of 1.5, 1.05 million, or 1,050,000 of free cash that can be used for financial warrant articles, increased funding for the fiscal '23 capital plan, it can be used on snow and ice deficit if we can't transfer funds within this current year's budget, or to be deposited into stabilization. And we always recommend that we leave a portion of that free cash to fall towards next year's free cash. If we look ahead, this slide, again, this is a financial forecast slide, just showing our projected debt and capacity going out for fiscal '23 and to '27. This slide's a five-year tax rate impact, and the fiscal '23 column is filled out with the recommended figures from tonight's presentation to show that impact. And it also includes all the outlier years for the debt exclusion amounts. And going forward, departments will present their more in-depth review of their budgets to finance over the next couple of months. So beginning on February 24th will be the first budget presentation. The House Ways and Means budget is, is voted on by the end of April, the Senate budget is voted on by the end of May, our town meeting is May 7th, and the state budget is finalized sometime after June 30th, typically, but sometime in July. And this is a meeting schedule, if anyone would like to attend any of those, or watch them on YouTube, of all the department's presentations to finance for their budgets. And this will be on the website as well. And that's all.
We'll open it up to questions. I'll start, I just have one question. Thank you for very detailed presentation here. One question and one comment. So the first question is, are, MONI Tech is going up significantly because it looks like there's a significant increase of attendance?
Yes, 11.
By 11, right. Do we know, you know, how normal or not normal that is, and why people are going out of the school?
I, we haven't had that conversation yet with MONI Tech. As far as, we do know, I think four were school choice kids, but that's part of their presentation that they give, is sometimes, I can ask that question, make sure they cover that.
Yeah, I mean, it'd just be interesting to know, I mean, is it, is it because their interests lie in there, or are they, are they getting, are they going towards something that they want, or they don't like the conditions in LPS? Would be nice to know the reasoning behind the sharp increase. And my one comment is, very near the bottom, when you do the tax rate impact, as I always explain to people, the tax rate for the most part is meaningless. If we could do a tax, average tax bill in, impact, that would be more meaningful to people, just because they'll be able to say, what is, how does that affect them? Because tax rates are only one half of the equation, so. Anybody else of the board have questions for the town manager?
I did not.
Mr. Franco?
Nope, I'm just absorbing all this.
Yes.
Well, welcome to the board. Mr. Jeffries?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I have a, I have a couple of questions. First, thank you to the town manager for such a detailed presentation. I feel like every year, a slide or two gets added here, and I think the additions this year are very helpful, so thank you for that. My questions are, are kind of focused on the school portion of the budget, I just had a couple of questions there. So one of the, one of the things is on school choice, and it notes that there's a 37% decrease, and at the same time, there is a 336% increase in charters, in charter tuition reimbursement. So this would suggest, I, I don't know what this means, but these numbers would suggest that students are not coming into our community for school choice, and that more are leaving our community, or is this related to Chapter 70 and the new Student Opportunity Act?
I think the, the former, but I, that's all reported to the state, so I can talk to the school about that question. So that was the, you're looking at the charges, right?
Yeah, I made the, it was very early on in the presentation, and I have that question written down.
Okay.
Just trying to find where that's at, but yes, it was in the expenditure section. And thank you Heather for writing it down. The next question is related to the note on grants, and there was a notation about roughly $2 million in elementary and secondary emergency relief. And I just have, so my question on this is, is, is this money, I think it's like to 1.8 or 9 million roughly, is this money being, can you explain to me a little, can you explain to me how this is factored into the current budget? Is this not within the budget and is above and beyond? Like, how does that work exactly?
So those would be funds that school could put towards their, their budget for positions. I think three of the, there's three grant positions. One is a sped grant, one is a DPH grant, and I think the other was through ESR funds. You just, yeah, ESR three funds.
And that's all included in the elementary and secondary school emergency relief two and three?
Yes, the shortened term is ESR two and three funds. Yes.
So I think the, the question I'm asking is, is this $2 million roughly factored into their, a current appropriated funds, or is this a $2 million unappropriated?
I can get more clarification. I know that the three positions that they, that the superintendent proposed that were going to be funded for grant were, well, only one of the three was through ESR funds. I don't know if there's other costs within the budget that are being covered by ESR that aren't employee-related positions.
Okay.
But I, they're also using, they have a, they're using their five-year staffing plan as a basis for growing out, and when they have grant funds that come up, or grants that come available, looking to that plan and seeing where they could apply them towards.
Okay, I, I see that we have like a note about 3.5 million in ARPA, I know we haven't received it, so I think maybe my question is also, like, is this a one-year thing, or is this spread out over multiple years?
The 3.5 for ARPA?
No, no, no. I was using ARPA as an example, where I know that that money's spread out over time. Is the money for ESR also spread out over time?
ESR funds are, do have an expiration as well. So ESR two funds need to be used by September of 2024, and ESR three funds need to be used by June of 2025.
Okay.
So I would assume that they're planning certain positions and outlier years using those funds as well.
Okay.
But that's a question for the school, but I don't want to confirm or.
Are you expecting an updated budget proposal from the schools requesting more than 3.1%?
I'm not expecting a request for more than 3.11%. I am under the assumption that the superintendent will be addressing her proposed budget at tomorrow night's meeting, maybe with restructuring.
Okay. And my last question for you is, I just, just a check on understanding, based on the budget proposal that you laid out for us tonight, it's, so I'm understanding this correctly, 1.05 million or 0.5 million is currently free cash that hasn't been assigned to home yet, and then $514,000 roughly is unappropriated, so that's roughly 1.5 million in, between free cash and unappropriated funds. Is that a fair understanding?
Yes.
Okay.
But I just wanted to note, I would never recommend use of free cash on the operating budget.
Yep, I understand that. So there is, I, I know that we had some conversations tonight about school street, you know, there's certainly going to be a need for some funding, but also, this budget hasn't, doesn't address the, the request for the old primary school. And so, you know, you mentioned that there's going to be some more modifications to the capital plan, do you expect that the school's request may be able to be accommodated in this budget cycle?
I think I'm waiting for more additional information as far as our unknowns, and then to, to readdress all the needs at that time. Once we find out some of our unknown costs, what our true MONI Tech assessment is going to be, as we now have the health insurance, we'll get our general insurance numbers soon. So once all those noon, unknowns become known, we can have a clearer picture of what we have available.
Okay. My last question comment is, I noted that the, that there's an $898,000, $898,610,000 increase in Chapter 70 funding, and that, that corresponds to, you know, notable 600 something thousand, $700,000 increase in, in school funding, and so I don't, you know, I'm not very concerned about there being a slight difference there in funding between what those additional funds were, because I know that over the last, over years, the state has not contributed as much, and the town's share of those contributions have gone up, and so I don't know if it's necessarily a bad thing that, you know, one year this state's proportions increase, but maybe the town's contributions don't increase as much. My question is, as in the presentation, there's a slide though about required funding, and it relates to the presentation that we had earlier with the state regarding how the Chapter 70 funding works.
Yes.
So my, my question is about the minimum funding. So when you look at the, the Lunenburg Public School system, you know, the state through that formula has a $12 million minimum contribution, and then the towns, I think, is at, you know, much higher than that. But when it comes to MONI Tech, we are meeting our minimum requirements. Is, is there an expectation for us to go above that minimum requirement for MONI Tech as there is for Lunenburg Public Schools, or is that just, hey, this is the cost, and just pay this?
Well, we're part of a regional district with MONI Tech, so the member communities vote on those budgets, so if you had a majority that didn't approve the overall MONI Tech budget, that's when our assessment would change, but in my years here, that's never happened.
I, I will, I will entertain an answer to, a more direct answer to your question, which is no, they assess us what they believe the budget should be by the formula that's granted in the charter of MONI Tech, so we're not looking, we're not looking to surpass that. They ask us, will you pay this? And the, the towns vote to meet that is just a yay or a nay to the budget, really.
Okay. All right, that's all for the note. All right, thank you for answering the questions, and for, again, the very detailed presentation. I'm sure that as we continue to discuss this, I will have more, but I think this is excellent, and I think this certainly meets the needs of our community, so thank you very much.
I did want to add, when you brought up Chapter 70 funding and our large increase in Chapter 70 funding, so we had requested kind of a rationale why we saw such a large bump, and that was looked into by our delegation, afforded on that it was, we saw a large increase in low-income families. So I inquired a little further, I contacted DUCY yesterday to get more reason, because something I had read was that the federal poverty level target was increased from 133% of that poverty level to 185%. So that would make more families eligible within Lunenburg, and so those could be existing families that have lived here all along, it just, now we have more, because the threshold was increased, it would increase the overall impact, and because we have more, a greater percentage of low-income families, those pupils, the per-cost pupil rate is higher, so it brings up our calculation of Chapter 70. It also, he also explained that due to the pandemic, mass health, a lot of families were able to stay on mass health longer versus being, were not forced to get off of mass health. So that, those figures all calculated as well, so the number of families on mass health who receive SNAP, transitional assistance, and foster care, all of those are calculated into that.
Makes sense.
Yeah, thank you for that. I mean, the federal poverty level is artificially ridiculous, and you know, one of the things that I, I did some research on this recently, and a family of four making $31,000 a year is not considered in poverty, which I think is ridiculous. I mean, how can you survive? I don't know how a single person can make it off of $31,000 and have a place to live, never mind a family of four. So it is good to hear that they've increased that, that poverty threshold, I think is going to capture more people who are certainly in need, so that's really excellent information. Thank you for that.
And to really learn more, if you haven't watched it already, that the meeting with the Finance Committee, Tracy Novak, came and did a full presentation on, that's a really good overview of Chapter 70.
She does an excellent job.
Yeah, and that's October 28th, I think it was.
All right. Any other questions about that? We're moving on. Okay, minutes, do we have minutes?
I don't think so.
We don't have minutes.
No, next meeting.
So warrants, payroll in the amount of $902,574.08. I was about to sign the post-it note. And payroll deduction warrant in the amount of $200,425.65. And finally, accounts payable in the amount of $508,183.66. Any action items from anybody? Mr. Jeffries, you always have action items. You are Mr. Action himself. You are Mr. Action himself.
Yeah, I have one today. I, mostly, I communicate with them offline with, uh, the town manager. Um, just on the maps of town-owned property, I know that we have a general map, and we saw that a little earlier today. Uh, I think the hardship is for people like myself who are colorblind, it's really difficult to read them. Um, and so if I'm, again, I'm just asking for a general map of the town that shows the properties that the town owns. So I know this is being worked on, um, and we should expect something soon, and I just want to highlight that this is just an ongoing request.
Thank you. I, I would want to ask, I know, I know that certainly on social media, there's been complaints about trash pickup, and I know yesterday that there was, uh, an, an accident with one of the Harvey trucks, but the town on their post, I appreciate the post, said it would be picked up today, and this was my first venture out into the world today, outside of my property, but my bag is still there, as my whole street is, so they didn't come and make up yesterday, so now it's out there again. And of course, everybody who puts out trash really worries that animals get into it and they don't want to find a mess at the end of their driveway, so, uh, and I know they've been missing appointments because they've had, because of COVID, they've had lack of, uh, enough staff. I, I would like to see this kind of addressed in, I want to be sympathetic, empathetic, and reasonable, but, you know, I also know that people expect their trash to be picked up, otherwise, I mean, in the winter months, not so bad. In the summer months, it'll be bad. So hopefully, they're going to get this addressed.
Yeah, I can assure you that our office has spent a lot of time on this and is constantly fielding calls and emails, as well as the DPW, obviously. Um, so we're in constant communication with E.L. Harvey.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports, Mr. Dwyer, any committee report?
Uh, none. Stormwater Task Force meeting, uh, for this coming week has been canceled.
Okay. Mr. Franco?
I have none.
Mr. Jeffries?
Yes, um, the Lunenburg Municipal Building Design Committee, uh, met this past Monday, and, uh, I was unfortunately not able to attend the meeting. However, I did watch it, um, and I did speak with, uh, several members of the committee. So the highlights are that the general discussion was kind of on what way to, what approach to take, um, and how to, you know, move forward with the expanded charge. We have a meeting, uh, I was also, um, elected to be chair of the committee. So we have a meeting coming up on, uh, March the 7th at, uh, 6:00 PM, and then that meeting will be a brainstorming to, um, review a lot of the, um, ideas that everyone has, these kind of major milestones that we're looking to accomplish, as well as all the steps required to actually achieve those milestones. And what I expect is that there's going to be a focus on those first few meetings, um, as we head into, uh, March and into April, to take a look back at the work that's already been done through the TAPE, um, study and also the VERTECH reports. So all of those reports, uh, have been printed and are available for members of the committee to pick up, and they're also located on the town website. And I think the, the hope is that as we move forward, that we'll have a very communicative process, um, with, uh, routine reports back to, um, appointing boards and committees, as well as, uh, pretty comprehensive review of, of making good on the work that's, like I said, has happened. So that way, we, we come out of this with a lot of engagement throughout the process, um, back with different boards. So I will have a more detailed update for us after that meeting in March, but again, that's scheduled for March the 6th, uh, at 6:00 PM.
Excellent. Uh, Finance Committee meets this Thursday, and the main topic will be this preliminary budget as presented by the town manager tonight. She will be giving that to the Finance Committee on Thursday.
I had one more, just an update, Mr. Chair. Yep, just to update, as our liaison efforts with the, uh, schools, so, uh, as, as the town manager noted, uh, we, Lou and I have been invited as well to attend, uh, some the civics courses, civics cla- history classes in the high school. Uh, and so Lou and I will be there, uh, tomorrow, and then also on Thursday to meet with those three classes. Also, on March the 4th, uh, we will be meeting with eighth-grade civics classes to discuss local government. Um, and last Friday, I conducted a, um, uh, Black History kind of overview, really focused on Shirley Chisholm and Thurgood Marshall, and that was presented to the, uh, three eighth-grade civics classes, and, uh, superintendent also sat in on, on, I believe, one or two of those presentations. And that really was a fun time, it was probably one of the funnest things I've done, uh, as a selectman, since most of what we do is hard work. So it was a lot of, it was a lot of fun, and I think Lou and I are pretty excited about meeting with the students, uh, this week.
Excellent. Yeah, I know engaging with, engaging with the students at that level with civics is a real good opportunity to share, you know, the less mundane things and the more inspirational things that public service can provide and offer to people, so, uh, that is a great experience.
Thank you.
Okay, old business, uh, fiscal year 2023 budget, well, we just went over that, capital plan, financial forecasts, annual town meeting warrant articles, anybody have any questions or issues beside what we've already gone over tonight with those? Seeing none. All right, we are, do not have a meeting next week, cause it is the last Tuesday of the month. Our next meeting is March 1st. I will not be at that meeting, so Mr. Jeffries, you are the chair again for, uh, that meeting. Yep, so any public comment from the public? Any public comment from the board?
None.
Anybody? I will say one thing, I'll, I'll, I mean, I guess I could have made this at the beginning, um, and, but I'll say it before Town Caucus, so it is my intent to run for reelection this year, so, um, I will be seeking the nomination, one of the nominations of Town Caucus, uh, for the Select Board again, so, for what it's worth. Uh, okay, so I would entertain that being the entire agenda, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, let's do a roll call vote. The only, only vote of the, the night, wow. Mr. Franco?
Well, just to be different, I'm going to abstain, no, I, I.
I'm ambivalent about adjourned.
Uh, aye.
And Mr. Dwyer?
Aye.
Mr. Jeffries?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Good night, everybody, and we will see you in two weeks. Until then, take care of yourselves, take care of each other. Good night.
Good night.
Recording stopped.